Good evening, everyone. We have an executive session at the beginning of our meeting. But first, before I enter that, everyone just rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. Our first order of business will be to go into executive session. You have some interviews scheduled. We have three or four, I think, three people here this evening who are interested in our boards. Thank you for applying and your interest. So our first order of business, I'll make a motion to go into executive session under MRSA four, five, six A personnel.
Sure.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Melita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero.
I'm here too.
Yeah, Jeff, I see you here, but because executive session, I think is we'll just go do the executive session and then we'll pull in.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm just gonna call randomly. I think we have Daniel. If you'll join us, we're just gonna have it here real quick. We're gonna be really fast.
I can't, uh, can't hear her now.
Good evening. I'm not sure who just that they can't hear anything. The council is currently in executive session, so you won't be able to hear anything until they come back. Thank you.
Jeff: I'm just gonna call randomly. I think we have Daniel. If you'll join us, we're just gonna have it here real quick. We're gonna be really fast.
Jeff: I'm just gonna call randomly. I think we have Daniel. If you'll join us, we're just gonna have it here real quick. We're gonna be really fast.
Thank you everyone for your patience. First our business roll call, we have three counselors present in the room and then we have Jeff on the phone joining us via Zoom. Yes, could you please call a motion to come out of this?
Oh, thank you very much, I absolutely can. I'll make a motion to come out of executive session subject to MRSA four or five, six A personnel.
Sure.
Thank you, we motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed three zero. Now we'll call to order. Now we have three counselors present in the room, we have one counselor present on the phone. Jeff will be joining us for the rest of the votes for the rest of the evening. My first order of business, I'm actually going to make a motion to move new business number two, planning and economic community director affirmation to the top of our agenda because we have our soon to be new planning economic community director here this evening with his family and we want to give him an opportunity to go home. So, motion on the table, hang in a second.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Alright, so we are now, Ken, I'm turning it over to you if you don't mind.
Thank you Madam Chair. As you know, we advertised for a planning slash economic community development director. We received four, five, four, that's the, four applications. We interviewed all four, narrowed it down to two, re- interviewed those two, then we narrowed it down to one final. My recommendation, my appointment, after the final interview with you sat in with us, is DeCarlo Brown. DeCarlo comes to us from Maryland, yeah, Maryland. He moved up here about two years ago. He currently worked at Brown York as their, one of the, in the planning department. He's been an environmental planner, zoning planner, planning technician. He has a master of arts in geography, environmental planning, Council University, and a bachelor of arts in interdisciplinary studies, Council University. He's AICP, and I'll have to tell you what that is certified. Climate change professional, which we're excited though. He has skills in landscape, historical land use analysis, database design administration, policy process analysis. So he's quite, quite knowledgeable in the field. He really was exciting when we interviewed him and all four of us, myself, Chair Cook, Assistant Town Manager Jen Gennell, and Paul Schumaker, the contract planner, all voted unanimously for him. I'm asking the council, can I confirm him? His time will be September 30th. He'll do all the aspects of pieces that we need done. We're very excited, we look forward to having him. He's been up here for two years, and I am in his family and his wife and his daughter right here, and we're excited for that. So I just want to like to ask DeCarlo to come to the podium and counsel, say a few words.
Just making sure this thing is on.
Yeah. Just lift it up a little bit, so you talk.
Put your mouth on it.
If my daughter would do that. Hi, good evening everyone, thank you so much for having me in your town and to become your planning and economic development director. My role here is basically to serve the needs of the town and for you all. You all have a vision of how you want your town to operate and to be and how you want it to be in the future and it would be my job to help you get there. So it is not my job to make decisions for you on your behalf. It's my job to facilitate that conversation and to basically, you know, put feet to the road to get it done for you. And so, you know, I'm just very grateful to be here. You all have such great assets in the town. Your town hall, your school across the street, the strawberry festival that I go to every year with my family. But you also have, but just so many other gems. I've already been involved in the community as baby rhyme time and with your, with your library and I go, I currently go through here every, every morning. And so I know some of the pressure points as far as, as traffic is concerned because I've been a part of it unfortunately. So sorry a little bit about that on one of the cars. So I'm really just glad to start here and to get started to work on, work for you. And I look forward to coming before you, you know, many times in the future with good news and great news. My, my initial plan here is just to, to do small wins and small joy, bring small joy to the town and to get it to, to, to get it to a point where you're enjoying your town even more. And then if you can wake up every day going like, oh, no, this is, this is new, oh. Like I can't believe we have this thing, I can't believe I live in this town, then, you know, I'm doing my job. So other than that, I'm not going to hold you here for too long and because I will be here for, for the future. So I just thank you all again for having me.
Thank you so much, DeCarlo. Alright, thank you Ken. Go ahead. And I will go ahead and make a motion to affirm the appointment of DeCarlo Brown with position of planning and economic community director for the town of South Hurwick.
Second.
Thank you, a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I like what we keep stealing from York. We got our police chief back there, now we got DeCarlo, we're doing a great job stealing from the town here. Fantastic. Welcome forward, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Thank you to York for graciously allowing us to take you but also being willing to, to join the team and come on board. I'm really excited to have you and your family part of our community. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Thank you, DeCarlo, for coming. We now feel like we need to stick around until our bedtime's coming up soon. Thank you for talking tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, that's very exciting. We'll move on to approval of minutes from our last council meeting on the 25th of August. Does anyone have any edits to these minutes? Doesn't sound like it. I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign the minutes from the town council meeting on August 27th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Moving on to signing of the treasurer's warrants.
Madam Chair, I will be signing the treasurer's warrant dated 9/5/2024 in the amount of $991,160.8 cents.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion in a second. For discussions, that includes the monthly school payments, so it is a large warrant. And that's both payments now in the amount of $803,234. There were motion on the table, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Moving on to public comments, is there anyone in the room who wants to speak on anything that's on the agenda? Anyone on Zoom who wants to speak on anything that's not on agenda earlier on? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business number one. This is regarding the municipal election that we have running up. And this is just a typical, I guess administrative motion that we must make every, prior to every election. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign the warrant calling a municipal election on November 25th, sorry, on November 5th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? And that's, all those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Okay, moving on to new business number one, law enforcement drone purchase. We have some other police partners here this evening, anything to give us some scoop on this? I'll invite a chief up, if you will, if you both would like to join us.
I'm just gonna turn it over to you if that's okay?
Absolutely perfect.
Great.
Madam Counsel, members of the town council, we're here to request permission to purchase an unmanned aerial vehicle. Currently, we have one FAA certified drone pilot, Officer Eric Bourne, who's behind me. He is assigned to the York County EMA drone team as a specialty. Per main law, Title 25, Section 4501, Subsection 3, the acquisition of an unmanned aerial vehicle by a law enforcement agency must be approved by the governing body of the government unit overseeing the law enforcement agency seeking to make such an acquisition or in the case of a state agency, by the commissioner of that, of that agency. We currently have three quotes. We're looking at the open box item, which is approximately $7,769 which we'll purchase out of our equipment line item. That's a savings of almost $4,000 compared to a brand new one. It is brand new, it's just an open box. The purpose of this unmanned aerial vehicle is for many reasons. For example, on 8/5 of 2024, there was a train fire in Berwick. The train disconnected the rear engine, the car that was on fire, and continued down the tracks as this was a passenger train. Officer Bourne deployed the York County EMA drone from his police vehicle and quickly located the rear facing train engine and car that was on fire. Officer Bourne was able to direct the fire departments in a timely manner to extinguish the fire before the fire spread to the woods nearby. The fire was under control within minutes once fire units were able to get their vehicles to the scene. Another example is lost people in the woods. I think they, I'll have Officer Bourne explain it, but they were going to deploy one, if they had one, they were going to deploy it this past weekend for a lost female in the woods. These drones that we're looking at, or unmanned aerial vehicles, are equipped with thermal imaging, which during the nighttime or even during the day, it'll help us see a heat signature of someone that would be in, be in the woods. The one other example we'll be using is if we have a critical incident, we're going to send the unmanned aerial vehicle in first so that way we can protect our officers and we'll be able to get a better scope of what's going on at the scene itself. I plan on having at least one more officer certified by the FAA to be licensed to fly the unmanned vehicle in case Officer Bourne is on vacation or just on days off. There's also going to have to be aerial software program that must be utilized and that can range anywhere from a thousand to $3,000 annually, which we will incur out of our budget. We currently already have a standard operating procedure on the use of unmanned aerial vehicles. It's policy number zero, I'm sorry, O dash 31. This unmanned aerial vehicle will not be used to spy on law abiding citizens of this community. This unmanned aerial vehicle will solely be used for the training, emergency uses, and at times used for the town to provide aerial pictures of the community for webpage updates, like we had deployed it for national night out. In conclusion, the only unmanned aerial vehicles in the area are Wells PD and York PD. I believe the addition of an unmanned aerial vehicle will only enhance our department in providing overview for, for safety, not only for the officers but for the residents that may become lost or within the perimeter of a critical incident. We are a small department with safety of our community a primary concern. Each tool we can utilize to provide safety in our tool belt is one less chance for an officer or resident to be a statistic. Any questions?
This is more of a process question. This is kind of coming from the council for approval simply because of the length of main state law.
Correct.
Not because of financial expenditure. So this is not necessarily above the bounds or existing budget.
Correct.
It's a separate process simply because main state law says we have to approve it.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I've got a couple. I hate open boxes. Every time I buy one, I get one. But, so if you look at, at your, at your cost, at the $7,769, there's no sense buying the open stock unless you're getting a warranty. And it's correct, right? So now we're at $84.64 with the warranty. For $11,000, which is $2,403 grand by martial math, you're getting a one-year warranty plus replacement insurance. Replacement insurance for a year, or?
Well, I'm gonna have Officer Bourne speak on this.
I believe it's a two-year, I don't have it in front of me. So, did they offer to either, when I was talking to them, it was either two-year option or one-year option, I can't remember which one. It may say it on the documentation, I don't have it right in front of me right now.
That's, that's fine, I was just curious there and were you going middle of the road due to your budget? Or so you don't have enough to go the 11?
It would put a strain on our equipment if I went to 11.
But that's where I want to go. Can we, will I find it? We'll find it, we'll take care of it. Okay. Yeah, I just. Um, yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that I don't, I don't want if this is one of those terms, I don't wanna handcuff you.
That's all correct, correct.
A budget constraint for three thousand dollars where we lose a warranty or lose a replacement insurance. Um, we will be obviously trading a new drone pilot, and I love watching the drone failures on YouTube. So if it happens, I'd love to have replacement insurance. Or if you're going into an active situation and something happens, it's nice to have it when we don't have to turn around. Three thousand dollars is cheap if we have to replace it. So that's that's just my view on what you should want. Okay, thank you.
When the drone, when the drone is in operation for the aerial pictures of the community for like the webpage and the Facebook, does um a licensed operator have to use the drone?
Um, always.
So always, so it wouldn't be somebody on the floor, some member of the fire department, somebody from the administration. It has to be?
It'll be either Officer Bourne or someone that we trained.
Okay.
Yep.
And question on the replacement insurance?
Well, it's insurance. It's a one year warranty, and then there's a replacement insurance.
Is the replacement insurance for operator error, like or like if you crash into a tree or?
Yes, that they're defined. The new one, the warranty covers something happens to it, you get a, either they they send you a temporary one so you can be in service while yours is getting fixed or replaced, and they will either repair or replace it. I've had to do that with some personal drones that have had some issues. Um, and they don't be quick about getting a refurbishment right back to you, so.
They don't have one.
How come other towns don't have them? Why don't more towns have them?
A lot of them, they don't have licensed uh operators to to be able to fly them. That's, we just happen to, you know, he's got a side business that he's had his FAA uh license going now for a while, so he's just a big asset to us to be able to have this.
It's relatively new technology, and law enforcement in this area is just beginning to realize the utilization and opportunities that are there for them. In California and places like that, they have, they have programs where they call it drones, the first responder, where their police station, they have a drone, they get a certain types of call, the drone takes off from the top of police station and goes and gets to the scene before the street cars get there and reports on on what's going on.
The shivyarders just started this about three years ago with their drone team that they had, and they're still trying to stand up and surveil there. So it is, again, new technology, technology up in this area.
Um, are you? Jack, did you have any question or commentary?
I just had one. Yeah, I just had, uh, so my understanding is that this is just a, it's basically a one time one time cost, correct, Chief? Um.
It's a one time cost, and then we have to purchase software that's gonna be annual. And that could be anywhere from a thousand to up to three thousand dollars annually.
Okay, and that would be on out of the police department budget?
Yes.
Great. Um, and um, just thinking about, you know, it's a, it's a skill, obviously. Uh, the, what does this do to the future? Um, for the department as far as the taxpayer is concerned? What is, what's this going to do as far as, uh, are we putting some uh something into our police department that does seem necessary, right? Um, but does this put an a different level of um officer that we are now gonna need to look for, or does that hurt us in a way in the future?
No, if we could find, I mean, as soon as we get the drone, I've already got people lined up that wanna, I'm only gonna accept the one. But we have people that wanna fly the drone, that wanna get their license. Um, and I think that with the future technology and all the new, uh, especially the new uh officers that are coming out of colleges and everything else, they're so used to technology that they are just more than willing, and most people have a toy one at home anyway. So they are more than happy, and I don't think it's gonna be an issue having uh hiring somebody in the future that's gonna, you know, take over after him after he leaves.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Life expectancy of the drone. How long we expect?
That's a good question. Um, it's more about advances in technology. Um, the drone companies, the one we're looking at is the the top line one that's being sold out right now, that's being bought by police departments around the country. I would estimate that, I mean, it will keep flying for five, six, eight, ten years, depending as long as we take care of it. Um, but will it be supported technology wise? Probably they will end of life it, and you won't be able to get parts, batteries, things like that. So I I would say a good five years. Um, beyond that, we might start getting into question marks.
No worse than our radios, sailors, cruisers. Unfortunately, everything else we have, we buy today, it's it's out of there.
Thanks. I have any other question? Anything else you wanna add? Tim, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I just wanna reiterate that um on the morning of that train fire, we're seeing the rain and traffic, and as soon as that Eric has a drone out, um, and took them in just minutes, he found exactly where the cow was in the tracks, but they they didn't know how to approach it. They're trying, they were going to the north, they were growing. Now, so trying to figure out which train access point to get on the tracks and so forth. Soon as they found it, they called us, I brushed it, picked up truck, went down the side of the tracks, they're right to them. Um, Chief Hamill came back and reiterated that all the chiefs there, because all those three towns responded, all were so thrilled with how we helped them find it. Uh, it was really just that one instance was great to me.
Madam Chair.
One more question.
Sorry.
Uh, so what happens if there is an incident and the drone is needed, and the officer who is licensed to use the drone is off duty? Are we looking at potential time hours, or do we not send the drone?
So we would do a call out, just like we do to our specialties, the SRT team. Uh, they get overtime when they get called out, will be the same way. If he's not available, then we just call the EMA and have one of the drone team members come down.
All right, John, go ahead.
All right, Madam Chair, I will move that uh, I just wanted to give the card. To approve the purchase of an undemand aerial vehicle, and also to allow the town manager to work with that purchase for the brand new with the insurance and replacement.
Second. Um, we have motion in a second, and so just again, kind of a procedural thing, because of the state law, we need to disapprove the purchase of it. We don't necessarily have to weigh in on the amount per se. Um, however, the motion is as it states, so. First, do what you need to do. Um, any other discussion or question? All those there say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm motion passes four zero. Thank you both for coming tonight. Any questions?
Um, all right, um, moving on to new business number three, uh, appointment of new board members. So we interviewed three member, three individuals for um the, for, sorry, for the historic district commission and the conservation commission. Um, and just to be transparent, um, one of those Sam Plinster, who is still here tonight, he currently sits on his zoning board of appeals, and the council has determined that is a conflict of interest for an individual to sit on both the zoning board of appeals and the historic district commission. Um, however, um, at least from the three of us who participated, the year from role with Dan, um, appointing Sam to either board, he's gonna look back to us and let us know if he has preference. Um, so we won't be seeing any action on Sam Plinster this evening. Um, however, I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Len Boe to the historic district commission for a term ending ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven, and also appointing Daniel Austin Maxton, and then you to the conservation commission, with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six.
Second.
Madam Chair, yes, one word, sorry. Um, if I could just have um Len Boe's um expiration date updated to the twenty twenty five.
Yes.
I, the way I did them, I was hoping that the first person would be here, um, but we had to fill that first. Um, oh, I understand. So we just have to update it to twenty twenty five expiration.
Okay, great. Um, I'll go ahead and amend that motion to appoint Len Boe to the historic district commission, district commission ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and Daniel Maxton to the conservation commission ending six thirty, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Melissa?
Aye.
John? Jeff?
Aye.
I motion passes four zero.
Hey. That takes care of all of our business for this evening. It's very light agenda. I'll pass it over to Tim and John for comments or support.
So Madam Chair, Town Council, um, the highway time. A paving will drive today. They should be done with that. They reduced that to the green surface and also Middle Street. Uh, they fixed the erosion problem on fifteen Liberty Street. Cleaned the drainage ditch from Pata House Silver Water District, installed a new person ramp at Gunny House Park with dikes. Annual cleaning of the sixty two catch catch spaces in town. Um, police departments had five arrests, two accidents, fifty five traffic stops, and the pumpkin man draft one went very well. They had more races, no accidents or incidents. Fire department had seven calls in the last two weeks to two hundred ninety two fouls to date. The new fire file, recruit files will be participating in their library evolutions at the Hall's Five County Training Center, ninth fifteen. This is one final evolution. New fire file is most complete of what we're hearing, because they are driven practical state certification for fire file one and two. Code enforcement had twelve building permits, six plumbing permits, ten inspections, and one violation. Um, planning had a four lot subdivision, it's fifty a dump the road. Um, go to preliminary plans. Um, the four lots subdivision of seventy four rodeo, rodeo road to show their sketch plan. Transfer station, the Todd Blue Bay line broke down over the weekend, has been temporarily fixed with a new chain. And we have received the bulk order of the new trash bags, so those are ready to build. And we now have the new transfer station stickers in stock, and we're heading them out those three years or orange. Yep. Um, you can get them at the transfer station. If you already have one, if you don't have one, you need a new one, you better come to the clerk's office. But if you already have one, you can just go on the next time and go to the transfer station. Um.
Library, so there's lowest time of the year, everyone going back to school. The van service is back up and running for interlibrary loading. It was down for a few months. Economic development, the comprehensive plan and the downtown revitalization plan are being finalized, and will be presented to the council very soon. Recreation, the soccer program has officially kicked off. There are two hundred and fifty three kids in the program this season. The enrichment at the school and adult hall programming starts the week of the twenty sixth, uh, sorry, the sixteenth and the twenty third. And the community center is closed this week for maintenance on the force. seniors, next week, the seniors will have a lunch to learn on managing stress and anxiety. And following, following, we will have a lobster lunch to celebrate National Lobster Day. And assessing, the KRT has had a field staff change. Patrick is no longer there. The new gentleman, um, Jerry is back up on our website, so I wanted to see what he is driving and what he looks like. The both of the people that are calling in and having questions on their tax bills are the people who had the tax stabilization last year. So they had a whole year where it's frozen. So and with the market increasing, they're seeing two years of jump in their tax bill. So that is the bulk of what we are seeing. So unfortunately, with what the state did, it really is affecting people on this program. And it's hitting them hard in the under our seats. So that's what we're seeing a lot of. Uh, town clerk's department, the owner location, he's remembered her, has been changed to venture school. New customer service clerk, money work, ward started on September third, and she's doing great. And our second new hire, Anne PC, is gonna be starting on the twenty third. And my department, I had ten business meetings and twenty one staff meetings in the last two weeks. Tax club enrollment has been extended until September twelfth, fifty nine accounts this year, which is two more than last year. The FEMA update, they are looking to do some mitigation at the top of Gutter House Hill. Last fifty feet, they actually wanna bury the power lines, but that's where it's closest to the trees to ensure that we won't have this happen again where the wires that pulled out of the house. We're just waiting on that gray light for them to get that contracted going on that project. Um, audit preparation, audit is gonna be starting the twenty third, so this week and next week, we'll be finalizing all the information for the auditor. The town hall coverage will be cleaned on the twentieth. I've been working with some of the main thing on a fifty thousand dollar grant to get something where it's it's raining, where you can do different items like do windows, do solar panels, um, do EV charging stations. So it will be something that will be passing on to DeCarlo when he starts, but I'm getting that all rolling. We'll have a public hearing, have people say, have to say how we should spend that fifty thousand dollars. And this has been ongoing for our few years, and it's rolling every six months. So if we, if we have multiple ideas, we can go through multiple grants. And because we have the town hall project already been going, that can help us some of our costs with that as well. And we also had a new server, uh, budget in the twenty twenty four budget, so I have the ball rolling and getting that on the salt slate. That's why.
And I know the citizen, our package issue, I was a citizen, I found called issue, they were draining on his property, so it was a rare recording of property. So I gave myself over and looked at it, and then made a determination, gave what, solved it by putting a rip rap in and felt the tear down on the rip rap to stop the erosion on that side. It's just, they built a new house and it's close to where the amount of water we have draining off out of that hole that dry normal, so it makes a difference. Um, we, I remember the citizen in the transfer station who violated the rule. We had a problem with them and um, our staff, our action, and so we stopped him. Had a visit, and see me and we worked it all out. They do a very good understanding of the expecting, work better. Um, I remember four citizens on their tax bill complaints, and those have been all elderly people who are trying to understand why their taxes jumped so much. Um, and this morning on the county, your county town manager's um conference call, that was an issue, it's an issue that occurred this evening a lot, they had some eight hundred of these applications and they're going through it. Um, and unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do. It was beyond our scope of help or our scope of services. And and there's not a lot we can do for them. It's really that can be of the community. Um, had four interviews with the economic development plan physician, and you know, we made an offer. And I received an email from a citizen about an employee. Uh, it's an reference to the town clerk, and it says, hi, I wanted to reach out, let you know about my experience with that town clerk, Diane Jim Russo of that town hall Thursday evening, August twenty ninth, I arrived at five twenty. There were seven people ahead of me. I was worried that Miss Jim Russo might close the office at six PM, the official polling time, but she acknowledged she'd stay until we were all provided service. Sure enough, not only did she stay, but she was also helpful, careful, patient, but the first person that she was with me, who I was last. She took time to work with each person's situation, took the necessary time to ensure that we were there for we were there, we were there for was completed. We're waiting for us, and that motivated, automated, automated data, let you know, it's a wonderful asset for the town. So it always needed to provide service so public, she did so with confidence, guidance, and great. That's Danielle's here, so congratulations, good job. And I was a week when Diane was all by herself because of the staff changes, so she stayed late and left, so I just wanted to say good job to Diane. That's all, uh, nope, last thing I have, I've been working on the administrative personnel section of the town code revision. And it's really up to you. But you'll have a chance when we get, as we go forward to be here. You guys will have a chance to see the division. So one of the, we don't have anything that says anything about planning and economic development, and we have a tree commissioner. Don't know which. So we'll probably change all that stuff. That's John, the tree commissioner.
I'm okay with that.
So I just now started working on that, get that myself in general for next year, and we have time to fill in and stop making changes to that, so we can submit them. That'll be a big section for you to work with us on, uh, as we go through with those changes. That's all I have.
And one question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Since we picked up two thirty six, there's still not clear on where to be home to. Are we on the hook to replace the guardrail that got destroyed by Woodland Hills or is it safe there?
The guardrail, we're
right in front of, right after Woodland Hills, it was pushed in about a foot and a half. It was a quite the accident there the other day.
Yeah, that won't be, I will.
So is it safe?
Yeah, we just, we just do road maintenance. That's not road maintenance, that's replacement of that.
Okay.
So so make it clear, so we know, we don't own it. All we do is, under the urban compact, we have to maintain it, so we do the, the seasonal maintenance of the road, that's what we're doing. We stay technically still on it, so on any major reconstruction, the bridge fell out or something like that, that would be very responsible. So the big sinkhole over here on two thirty-six that keeps opening up, and we let them know, we told you about it, we gave it to us, you're responsible for it, we'll help you responsibly, we're not paying, so they'll be taken care of, they don't have to pay, there's a lot of law, they still own it, and it's just road maintenance, so it's all you.
Excellent.
I just wanted to make that perfectly clear.
Don't, I appreciate that, and thank you, can I answer the question, I'm not answering.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind if I ask a question, um, it's something I actually get, I don't know if any of you might be able to answer it. Does anyone know why the great work store is so low?
Yes, because they closed the jam to fix the work line of the jam.
Perfect, thank you, I have an answer now, because I'm like, I don't know. I learned something, so I think, yeah.
They closed, they closed the jam to fix the down, the down river side of it, it was, had some, I asked Jay that the other day. Jay knows all.
Yeah, one of those questions, they're popping up. Um, all right, you guys all right? Content comments, Melissa?
Uh, this past Monday, we had our final downtown revitalization committee meeting, and, um, everything is looking fantastic, and, um, in discussion with Jeff Treble from Wright Pierce, um, he would like to come for the council on, um, September twenty-fourth, the second, if it's doable. Um, and with that being said, he will have, um, all of the plans and supporting documents available to the council by Monday, the sixteenth, so we can start reviewing it, because it is a pretty big packet um, to review, so we can look into that, see if that would work on the agenda, but I did also let him know if the agenda's already looking pretty full, he's more than fine with waiting till October, but he's ready to rock and roll when we are, so whatever works best for us, um, which works for him, so. Um, and I ran into Chief Ruger, uh, this weekend, he was banning one of the, um, traffic stations for the pumpkin man race. Um, saw volunteers, uh, those are, the races always run well, um, it's a really great, um, fundraising opportunity. Um, and I would do it, but good, good for those people, and, uh, yeah, that was it.
Thank you, uh, Jack, do you have anything? I'm going out of work, sorry.
I don't have anything, thank you.
No, I'm done, done.
Uh, it's that time of year, weather's changing, early food season is happening, turkey season opens next Monday, so for all the people to say I hear gunshots around town, the season is upon us, so you will hear gunshots around town. That's, uh, that's it, again, pumpkin man is a great success, my dogs cheered on the runners and bikers all day long by barking at them going by, so my dogs thoroughly enjoyed the day, um, Rachel did a fantastic job, but then again, thank you all the volunteers and for us on that, that's all I have.
And my only thing, we're just sort of two months away from, um, the election, I, if you do not, I just encourage everyone to make plans to vote election, um, or sorry, the polls will be open at Central School, Calhoun Street, from seven AM to eight PM on Tuesday, November fifth. Um, and absentee ballots are available, if you would like to request an absentee ballot, um, you can do that online, or you can run into the office and, and the clerk's office. That's all I have, thank you all.
Madam Chair, who, we, adjourned.
Second.
You have a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned, thank you everyone.
Night everyone.